Call this meeting to order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
invocation by the Salvation Army. Okay, roll call.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldhammer.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Bathke.
Here.
Chart.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval of consent agenda items, items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for a discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Sir.
Second by Mr. McCardle. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Chart.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldhammer.
Aye.
Citizens input, if you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time.
Good evening, council and mayor, my name is Stuart Hanson, I wasn't able to make it here last meeting, so I thought I'd be here tonight. I'm here tonight to talk more about the Corn Palace. There was a good turnout at the March 3rd council meeting for a discussion on expanding the Corn Palace. Except for a couple of chamber folks, whose jobs depend on tourism, the rest of the people that night were against spending eighty-five thousand dollars for another design plan and against a Corn Palace expansion. Jeff Logan spoke for approximately seventeen minutes, so some people didn't get a chance to finish their thoughts. Here's a few things I wanted to say. In the February 7th, 2024 edition of the Mitchell Republic, when talking about the Corn Palace, Mr. McCardle said, "You'd think we'd want to keep it looking good and keeping it up, because every business in town profits from this building." But he never mentioned anything about the average citizens of Mitchell profiting. In that same article, Councilman Smith says, "If we can get, if we can get a project the public gets behind, why don't we go out and try to sell this thing to a private company as a sponsorship? Who is the 'we' and how much have we raised so far? As Roger Music and myself stated previously, when looking at the Forward 2040 survey, residents of Mitchell were asked, 'What do you believe are the biggest opportunities for Mitchell over the next ten years? The Corn Palace finished last." So the public isn't interested in this project. When Jeff Logan was talking about the Forward 2040 survey, he said, and I quote, "It was a generalized survey, you really can't apply it to the Corn Palace? It was too general, too generic to be of any use. So why was the survey conducted? Oh, and by the way, it was the same general, generic survey he and many of you and others used to convince the citizens of Mitchell that we needed to drain and dredge the lake, because in that same survey, cleaning the lake finished number one. So, to use the Forward 2040 survey to convince people to vote yes on dredging the lake, it claim it's too generalized and too generic of a survey, and it's of no use when talking about expanding the Corn Palace, that's a disservice to the taxpayers of Mitchell. When Mr. Logan was talking about the Corn Palace shows, he said, "As the mayor proved with Scotty, with the Scotty McCurry show, when properly advertised, we almost filled the palace, almost. How much more proof do you need that more seats won't help anything? When Mr. Music was speaking at that March 3rd meeting saying people don't want to expand the Corn Palace, Mr. McCardle interrupted him and said, 'We don't know what the people want, because we haven't voted on it. You don't want it, but maybe some people do want it. But Mr. McCardle, we do know people don't want it because of the Forward 2040 survey, but apparently you and some of the other council members don't care.'" In the twenty, in the February 25th edition of the Mitchell Republic, Mr. Bathke said, "We haven't listened to the people," but that's not true. Mr. Bathke, Mr. Dosher, and Mr. Goldhammer are listening to the people. Why aren't the rest of you? It shouldn't be about what you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening, Jesse Stroud. I would just like to follow up with Stuart, that, a note for him and for you guys that last year in the newspaper, I believe it was Smith and McCardle, you guys were quoted as saying that we can't do two projects at one time. We had to pick one or the other, we couldn't financially do it. So, either those quotes were bull, or they were accurate. So, you know, in the statement of, you're gonna have to listen to somebody, whether it's, you know, not your own opinion. But anyway, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Alrighty, we're gonna move on to mayor and city council discussion items.
This might be more of a public commentary thing than, than council and mayor discussion, but I did want to just mention Liz, Luzak is not able to be here tonight, but this last weekend was the St. Patty's Weekend Extravaganza, and it was really well attended, apparently in spite of the weather that came through. She said that the seven participating businesses were packed, I can attest that. We picked up some carryout that night from the depot, and it was packed, and John was thrilled. Great feedback for, back from businesses and the people who participated. And also, the Wing of Palusa is ongoing this month, so if you haven't tried any of the wings, they're really good. I hope you will get out there and do that, it's going really well for all of the business participants as well. And if you don't have the Mitchell South Dakota app, that's where you need to look to see who the participants are. So, download it tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Will the mayor's State of the City, is that what we're, on the 25th?
Yes, I was gonna bring that up.
Is that going to be on public record, so if more than quorum meets or goes to that, we won't be in open violation?
My advertising for sure.
Thank you.
Hmm, that is a good question, I should've thought of that. Uh, so yeah, if there's nothing else, then yeah, I'm doing the State of the City. Next Tuesday, 7 o'clock, the 25th, at the Mitchell Technical College Amphitheater. They put a tremendous amount of work, as well as many of the staff. It's gonna be about forty-five minutes of a presentation, it's super in-depth. I guarantee anyone will learn something, it's very in-depth. It'll be really fun, there's a lot of really cool stuff, and I went and took just, I mean, there's hundreds, I have hundreds of pictures and all the fun stuff, all the water projects we've been doing, all the projects that happened last year, all the public works projects, all the projects that were done. I got photos and a description, and how much we spent on it, and all the impact, and it's really cool. So, if you can be there, it'll be fun. And if there's nothing else, I'll move on. Alright. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the city council to recess and sit as the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Action to set the date for the Board of Adjustment hearing 4-7-25. Marco Laason has applied for conditional use permit for two family dwellings on the parcel located as shown on the agenda.
Set the date.
Motion to set the date.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Reconvene the city council, entertain a motion for the Board of Adjustment to adjourn and the city council to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Charks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Hearing and action on the application of the Erie Community Theater and Mitchell Inc. doing business as Erie Community Theater and Mitchell Inc., 700 North Main, for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, lottery lottery is not included. Chief Knippling.
Mayor, Mr. Council, Chief Knippling here. Please have no objections to this.
Okay, no objections?
I, I just had a question. I thought that they already had one, is that this is a new one?
Are they reapplying, I think is what was said.
This will include beer sales, which they do not currently have.
They need it though.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing on application for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, to support LifeQuest in the construction of the village of four to six micro homes to provide affordable housing to adults with developmental disabilities.
I gotta call Eric, he's not able to be here in person.
She has to call Eric, because he cannot be here in person, for all those at home.
He heard his back, so. I already did.
How would you know that?
Hello?
Hi Eric, it's Stephanie, we're on to the hearing now with the city council.
Okay, good. Are we, are you ready for me to kinda walk you through it?
Yep, we're ready for you to walk you through it.
Okay, sounds good. Well, sorry, I couldn't be there tonight. I don't know if Stephanie explained, I kinda ran into a issue with my, with my back, and I was in horrible pain, so the ride up would have been kinda rough. But I think we have, are, do we have some folks from, from Life, uh, LifeQuest there tonight?
Yep, there's a couple here.
Okay, so if you have any questions about like what the project is, I think Pam and the crew there can maybe answer those questions, but I'll just, I'll briefly talk about the, the Community Development Block Grant process and what, what we're asking the city of Mitchell to do. This is gonna be very, very similar to the, the Mitchell Safe House project that some of you may remember from a couple, three years ago. Basically, the, the, LifeQuest has developed a proposal for, you know, some homes to take care of, or offer them for people that they serve, and, and what, what we're looking to do is apply for block grant funds that would be sponsored, you might say, by the city of Mitchell. In this case here, the city of Mitchell will be simply the, the pass-through agency for the, for the funds. The block grant funds cannot go directly to a nonprofit. In any case, in any project, they have to first go to a, a unit of local government. So in this case, we're looking at the city of Mitchell. Project costs are coming in about, I'm gonna say about 1.8 million or so. And you correct me if I'm wrong, but we are, we are requesting $750,000 in block grant funds to, to help with the construction costs on this, on this micro home project. The, the two things that I guess I really wanna make sure we, we look at, and I understand, we don't have the resolutions out there as, as advertised, but I think we can definitely show intent tonight from the council to support those resolutions or pass them at their, at the next meetings. And so, really, what we're asking the city to do is, so, you know, we're assuming that the, those resolutions are, are, will be passed, but the first resolution is basically giving the, giving the city and the mayor the authority to sign the paperwork on the application for block grant funds, and then, and submit the block grant application. Then the, the other resolution basically dedicates the, the mayor position as the, the project certifying officer and environmental certifying officer on the project, and mayor, basically this is, this is very much like what, what your role is now with the, with the Safe House project. So basically, when all, all paperwork comes in regarding the projects, like for drawdowns, and for other reports and so forth, the, that resolution gives the mayor the authority to sign that stuff, or sign that paperwork outside of council meetings. I know we, we had a, we had a notice in the paper, and so one thing that we'll need to submit the application is an affidavit of publication for that hearing, and I know sometimes they are, they're, it can take a while to get those, but we can, we can, for now, we could just look at attaching maybe like a, you know, a copy from the paper, and go from there. And then, the other thing is that there were, there was a whole lotta, lotta forms that we sent you, and we don't expect the, you know, the council and the mayor to stick around and, and sign every one of them tonight. Those are just the forms that go along with the application, they don't require city council action. But we'll need to have those for the application in a couple of weeks. I'm probably, I'm probably going in about fifteen different directions right now, so I, I'll just stop and, and see if anybody has any questions about what the CDBG process or program is, or anything about the, the project. I'm, I'm open for, open for questions.
And then Eric, Mark, Eric, and then the mayor and council, they did provide us updated site plan and drawings too as well, so I just wanted to make sure everybody saw those are updated from the last time you looked at proposal as well.
I was just curious, I was just curious how much each one of the micro homes you think are, what's the estimated cost of building one?
There, well, I suppose it's 1.8 million total project cost. And your, if there's six of those units, we're, you're probably looking at about, you know, 300,000. I would say that's probably top dollar. I think, I think the total cost also estimates the cost of the design professionals. Civila design is involved in the planning of the project, so there is that to factor in. But yeah, 300,000 or less, I think is what the, what they're looking at. And I guess if, if LifeQuest staff were there, if you, could you correct me if I'm wrong?
She's coming to the podium.
Yeah, hi, this is Pam.
Okay, alright.
Pam Hannah from LifeQuest, thanks for having us. I think they're quoting at about $300 per square feet. And I think that's my, probably around 200,000? And that's gonna, you know, there's no sewer or water or anything in there, so that's everything coming in there.
And then, tell us about the community center, I don't think we talked about that much.
Yeah, so with this design, you see, there's two buildings that almost look like they're connected, but they're not. That's two old buses that used to sit in there, and it's just how it came out on there. So there's, they're not connected. This community center is actually what I talked about last, or two weeks ago. It's going to be an office area and a garage, and then a little gathering space in case maybe you, they all wanna watch the Super Bowl or something together, or have a dinner one night.
And you did mention that there would be someone like a supervisor, caregiver kind of person that would be on duty, and would they be in that community center, is that where they'd be located?
They will kinda function out of there, but it will be their job to go in and help people cook their meals, clean their home, go out to a movie, or go over to a basketball game or something like that. And that will be until about nine o'clock at night, and then, in the overnights, we will use remote technology.
Hannah, what is your guys' storm shelter? Do you guys have them?
Do we have a storm shelter? No, but probably evacuation would be, if you go through those, what seems to be a tree line there, we have a great big group home behind there. So if we were to have to evacuate, we would probably go into there, which would have a very large bathing area type of the unit, and more indoor hallway space that we use now for evacuation.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's probably what we do. You know, it's a good question, and something, I'm guessing Casey's getting on our list right now. Anymore?
If, if you, if any of you caught a, a story on, on Kellaland News last night, they, they actually highlighted a story about Lifescape in Sioux Falls doing something similar. They opened up their fifth duplex project in town, and so it's very, very similar in, in function, and I know they have space for staff to, to be close by too. So that's, it'll be interesting to see how their project goes. I think that might inform, you know, LifeQuest how, and how they do their project.
So these are, that is the floor plan for what a single home would look like? And there would just be one person per home? Anything else? I'll go sit back down. Okay, then, following tonight's hearing, just for council and public's information then, the intent is to move forward with the application, we'll bring those formal resolutions to the next meeting.
Do you need, do you need a motion or anything?
Eric? Can you ask Eric?
I think, I think that would be very good. Yeah, I think if we have a, something in the minutes that show intent to, to pass the resolutions, I mean, I know you're not gonna do that tonight, but.
Can I suggest? Can I suggest a motion for you, because we kinda talked about this earlier today? Oh, I got the wrong one here, hold on.
Yeah.
So it would be, following the hearing, the city council is authorizing proceeding with the application, and then you will take formal action on the resolutions at the April 7th, 2025 city council meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Eric.
Alright, thanks everybody. It's too bad, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, it was a great night for driving, but I guess we'll, we'll come up, we'll come up soon.
Okay, thanks Eric, bye.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, next one. Request to rename the Kelly property as the James Valley Nature Preserve. So I'll start with this one. I've just heard, I've heard a lot that they, some people would refer, or prefer to not refer it as the Kelly property, and this is just a name I chose one day, and you guys can name it whatever you want, or choose to not do it. I really like the idea of putting some trees down there, we already have a tree spade, start our own, you know, nature preserve, let bike riders go down there, or hikers, because it is a beautiful area, the part, can you bring up the map Stephanie, where I'm talking about? It's just the area where it's basically the wetlands and access to the wetlands. So I don't think we could ever do anything with that anyway, it's not the farmland or any of that stuff. It is beautiful, if you ever go out there. Right now, it's a little muddy, because of the wetland project, but. Like I said, I'm not stuck on the name, I think it's got, it rolls off the tongue, you guys can call it whatever you want. Call it the John Dosher. Nature Preserve if you want.
My only thought on this, as she's pulling that up, was this may be a, a good opportunity for a naming contest, that we could open it up to the city.
That would be pretty funny.
That could, I mean, it could provide some opportunities for different, naming opportunities for people to provide some background to pay homage and honor to different people and historic events of Mitchell.
Yeah, I'm fine, so it's just more to your right there Stephanie, keep going, keep right there. Yep. And then, just the portion above that too. So, yep, so that's all wetlands now, so everything you see, that's just pretty much all, mostly is just mud, and will be cattails eventually, and then below that, it's just essentially access to that area. The naming contest is kinda funny, you, like a, you mean like when they renamed the Plow in Minnesota, or are you talking about like actual names? Did you see the Minnesota Plow one?
I was thinking being that it's on the fire steel, you know, the fire steel natural.
Nature Preserve, yeah, mine was.
Instead of the James Valley.
Yeah.
That's more the Jim River, but.
Yeah.
It's on the fire steel, so it'd make more sense if, something to do with fire steel, but we, we can do whatever you want.
I always just, whenever we're talking about stuff, just say, get it on the agenda, let's talk about it, so. Do you guys have any ideas? Anybody's name that we would like to put onto it?
I think it's a good, because I think Ms. Kelly has expressed she wants her name not associated with anymore.
Yes.
So I think it's a good idea to name it something, I don't care with the fire steel.
Do you have any further description, Tim?
I have no preference on whatever you wanna call it, I just, and that's, and honestly, that's where I think that having a naming contest, or I think there might be somebody out there that could come up with a, a good name that would not be me, because I don't have a shoe in the game, I guess, but.
So what direction would you, go ahead.
Maybe, maybe in the, in the meantime, we can name it the Fire Steel, and if we get a better name, we can rename it.
I'm fine with that too.
So that way.
Fire Steel, Nature Preserve.
That way the Kelly family is.
Makes sense, means it's on the fire steel, yeah.
Yeah, someone pointed that out to me, that it wasn't part of the James Valley. I probably should've thought of that before. I mean, I'm fine with that, just add it, make it nature-y.
Do we have to bring that back, Justin, or how, how do we?
Just amend it.
Okay. I'll make that motion for Fire Steel, Nature Preserve.
Fire Steel, that sounds nice too. Let me get a little sign made.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
I have a question. Good evening again, Jesse Stroud. The question be, it would be, so you said something about being able, like public has access to that property?
I don't think right now because it's a construction dome, but maybe in the future if we did allow access.
So calling it a nature preserve, would there be intent to make it parkland or an actual nature preserve?
That would be my intent. That, you know, if you go out there and you look at it, it's, you know, I was taking pictures and I was like, this would be a really cool place for biking and, you know, hiking and all that other stuff, you know, and kind of expand our boundaries outward. I don't think we could do it right now. I don't know what the rules are exactly. Kevin looks a little nervous over there. But some, I mean, right now, I mean, it's pretty hilly, like I don't, I wouldn't even feel comfortable driving my truck up because it's such a steep, I mean, we would have to figure, do some manipulation of the land, so.
But that would be, does not currently have that use, but could in the future as intent.
Right now it's roped off for a construction site, so.
As a point of city ordinance, because it is adjacent to the city lake and a city-owned property, it is parkland.
Okay, there's your answer then.
Perfect.
Isn't that, is that.
No, I'd say that's, it's, it's not adjacent to the lake, it's adjacent to the Fire Steel Creek, so.
Which is why we're not calling it Lake Mitchell.
So the, the action, the action tonight wouldn't declare it parkland or anything like that. We could take that action in the future. Tonight is just for the name.
Yeah, it's just a.
Yes, correct.
First step in a long line of things. Eventually I think it'd be really cool because it's beautiful out there.
Yeah, okay, as a clarification, thank you.
Joe, Joe, can you tell us where they're at? I thought that was supposed to be done.
But.
Is it?
I, I, it looks like they're pretty much done, but I think they need to actually add the cattails.
Yeah, all of the excavation is done. The only thing that's remaining is seating and a little bit of cleanup.
Okay, and if you want to see pictures, come to my State of the City next Tuesday at 7:00 PM because I do have detailed pictures.
I still don't have a problem with moving forward with a contest or naming rights or something. You can think about that, Mayor, if you want to follow through with that. I, I would have no concern with that. There's a better name out there, as Tim said.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. So we have a motion in a second for at least a temporary rename or permanent with an option to change for Fire Steel Nature Preserve. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Island Water Main Bore with Homie Inc., Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. City staff requested Homie provide a quote to perform a water main bore under the canal, which would loop the dead end of Maui Drive with Canal Circle. This would be the final looping project around the lake. The quote utilizes the bids of Mitchell West Harmon Water Main Loop and the 12th and 13th Avenue Water Main Loop, which were city bids. And those projects were awarded on January 2nd of 2024. Staff does recommend council approval of the project to Homie Inc. for the cost of 104,020. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Turks, just a little quicker. Further discussion?
Coming out of the water fund.
Yes, it'll be out of the water enterprise fund, that's correct.
Okay, any of the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Corn Palace Railings and ADA Upgrade Quote with Bailey Metal Fabrication Project 2025-18, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Civila Design completed a, a design for the ADA upgrades at the Corn Palace, which included handrails along access aisles and additional wheelchair seating. Bailey Metal Fabricators provided a quote for the project. Project totaling 65,000. The project includes 43 aisle handrails, which will be powder coated black, and the addition of 12 wheelchair seating locations. Staff recommends city council approval of the attached quote from Bailey Metal Fabricators for a lump sum fee of 65,000. And I can answer any questions you may have.
I'm just so happy to see this going to a local vendor. Makes me happy, so I'll move approval.
Motion by Mrs. Turks.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer.
Hey, Joe, on the, as I look at the details, are they installing both the handrails and the platforms or is it just the platforms?
Both, handrails and the platforms.
And it sounds like the current timeline is after the Corn Palace Festival, after the concerts, that's when we're going to start the, the work and rip out all the chairs and then refinish the concrete and then put the new chairs on, just for an update. The last concert with the old chairs, if you, so don't miss out. And I think we're, and I think we're going to announce the, the first act next Tuesday at my State of the City, so there's going to be a lot of stuff, so don't, don't miss it. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? What? Why are you laughing at me?
Well, do we have a signed contract?
Do we have a signed contract?
With the artist?
Yeah, we have a signed contract, right? And, and we should be, yeah, and we're, we should be allowed, and we're allowed to, yeah, we talked about, you were gone at that meeting. We talked about it.
Perfect.
I'm cutting edge, I told you, I just get stuff on it.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make some really quick comment. And I'm glad you made that comment about somebody local here. Bailey Metal Fabricators, they, when we were going to put our domes on here a few years ago, they determined that, that they weren't secure enough and they would have been flying down Main Street as soon as we had the wind like we had Saturday. And Bailey stepped up and came over and reinforced all the welds before we put them up, so this, and they did a, a very good job for us and I'm glad that they've got this contract because it's a little bit of a reward for what they've done for us in the past.
Thank you to Bailey Metal Fabricators. I also have pictures of inside of the domes, if you want to see those welds next Tuesday. All right, although.
You saw them too, didn't you?
Yes, I did. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Amendment Number Two Agreement A 2024-01 to H.R. Green Inc. for the Seventh and Main Traffic Signals, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. The city approved in agreement with H.R. Green for design services for the Main and First and Seventh Intersections on May 2nd of 2022. Amendment Number One was approved on January 6th, which brought final documents to allow Muth Electric to change order in the First and Main Intersection into their current project, which is the Seventh and Main Intersection. This Amendment Number Two adds construction phase services for the First and Main Signal Light Project. Work includes construction administration, onsite inspection and testing and project closeout. This amendment is for 31,000, 31,808.40. That would be at an hourly amount, not to exceed. And with that, I do recommend approval. Shortly after this agenda item is the change order with Muth Electric, which would change order in the First and Main Intersection to the Seventh and Main Intersection Project. So if you do not plan on approving the Muth change order, I recommend you not approve this contract with H.R. Green, but if you do plan on moving forward with the First and Main Intersection, that you do approve this agreement. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Joe, I have a question, please. If I recall correctly, I was opposed to the street changing on Seventh and Main, the street light, because of the cost. And then the cost at the next meeting or two meetings later came down significantly less. Now we're back up.
This intersection actually total costs less than the Seventh and Main Intersection.
Were, were we talking Seventh and Main or First and Main?
This would be in addition, this is, this is adding First and Main to the Seventh and Main contract.
We never had, we never had a plan for First and Main.
We did.
We did.
Yep.
What Joe's saying is the cost for First and Seventh now is cheaper than just what Seventh cost last year, right?
Correct.
I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Well, all I, all I'm concerned about is that their bid went from 62 up to 30 or up to 94.
So that was just for.
Is that because they're going to do more or?
Well, that was, right, correct, yeah, because that first estimate is just, or not estimate, that agreement was just for Seventh and Main. So this is adding in First and Main for 31,000.
Okay.
So it's additional construction phase services because now they're doing the second stoplight, so they have additional professional services to.
Got you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bethke. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
I do want to point out that I believe when we were awarding Seventh and Main, we talked about having the signal lights be powder coated black with the changes that we were doing and bid laws, we had to remove that from the contract, so the poles will be aluminum in color.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Change Order Number One to Muth Electric Inc. for the Seventh and Main Traffic Light Improvement Project 2022-08, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Change Order Number One adds new traffic lights at the First and Main Intersection. It also adds the installation of the video, video detection at the Seventh and Main Intersection. The poles will be in aluminum color, as I previously said. This is an increase to the contract of 286,024.36. There are expenses that the city is taking over that we're ordering and Muth will install only. That includes the video detection system and EVC equipment. And that's all in the cost estimate and that was planned for in our, in our project costs during supplemental appropriation. City staff does recommend approval of the change order of Muth Electric as outlined, and I can answer any questions you may have.
So once again, the way the agenda item said it was addressing Seventh and Main, but in fact, this is going to be First and Main also.
Correct.
And, and did we ever set aside a certain amount for First and Main streetlights?
We did in the supplemental appropriation, that'll be read tonight.
And how much was set aside back whenever?
I believe we requested 300,000.
So we're going from 300 to another 286 for First.
So the total, so the total project, so what we had happened is Seventh and Main came in under budget. So I believe we had roughly 150,000 that was left over that we put forward towards First and Main. And we also requested an additional 300,000 to cover the other additional costs plus allow us contingency. So when, by change ordering in First and Main with Seventh and Main, that means that you're getting that good price of Seventh and Main.
Okay. I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McConnell to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
When are they going to start, Joe?
So they have, I believe the equipment is, it'll be fall, because they got to order the poles and there's some lead time on the poles. And they delayed ordering the poles until they knew if First and Main was going to go through or not.
A quick question of the, are they going in the same position? I don't know if the, there was discussion maybe on the Seventh one of going further in towards like the community theater.
That's what they're doing, they're going to go in. So people don't hit them with.
Is there a diagram of what that looks like that, on this?
The Seventh and Main's already been approved, so that would be.
It would have been in the previous one, but it is being moved into that.
Further away from the street, yep.
Okay, understood.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Agreement A 2025-21 Memorandum for the Understanding for the Water Ted Protection and Flood Prevention Program between National Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, and the City of Mitchell, Aurora County, Giralt County, and the James Water, James River Water Development District, JRWDD. Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Mayor Council, the attached memorandum of understanding is for the Watershed Protection and Flood Prevention Program, or the WFPO, between the sponsors of the project. The sponsors involved are Aurora County, Giralt County, James River Water Development District, and the City of Mitchell. The primary goal of the MOU is to establish that the City of Mitchell is willing and capable of assuming the financial and contract administration responsibilities of the planning phase of the Fire Steel Creek project. This agreement does not continue into design or construction phases of the watershed project. Those phases after planning will need additional agreements from sponsors to assign responsibilities and ownership to each project that is chosen to be implemented. The City of Mitchell, as listed in the MOU, has the responsibilities to develop a scope of work for contractors to bid, and the contractors being design firms for the study. Developing an independent government estimate or plan of work, which NRCS will help us with that. Assuming the financial responsibility of paying architecture and engineering firms until cost reimbursements are paid by NRCS. This means that typical to like our SRF projects or other grants, we will pay for those dollars upfront and then be reimbursed through this grant. This will only apply to contract items that are approved by all sponsors for reimbursement. Filling out the WS3 form for planning funds requested through the submission. Staff does recommend council approval and to grant authorization for the mayor to sign, and I can answer any questions you may have.
I've got more of a comment than a question. I, I attended the meeting in Plankton and I'd just like to commend Joe, he took a beating. It really got on him there.
It was a process, but here we are, we got, we got to the finish line.
But he got there, so I mean, kudos to him because I didn't think it was going to happen, I really didn't. After I left that night, some people cornered me even and they're like, why would we do this for Mitchell? I said, why wouldn't you be a good neighbor? And they finally realized through Joe conversing with him that it probably isn't such a bad deal, it doesn't cost him anything.
Joe does a very good job with all those things, so good job, Joe.
He was way calmer than I would have been, I can tell you that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McConnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bethke. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
City Council, Steve Simpson. I, I don't come opposed to this project, this study. I think it's needed. We should understand what we're dealing with, with what is coming into the lake, that's what the study will do. My concern is that we should wait for the study and the results before we move forward with any drainage efforts, spending a lot of money cleaning up something that's going to get dirty again if we don't solve the problem with the watershed. And there's two things that could prevent us from preventing the nutrients from coming into our lake after the study. Number one would be the cost, the cost of eliminating enough nutrients so that we don't have an algae problem going forward after we dredge the lake. A second problem, the, most of the sponsors of this are against Emma Domain, so if we require Emma Domain in order to fix the lake, there's going to be a big problem to hold up this project. So I'm in favor of the study, but we need to use this study to make a smart decision on what we do with the lake today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Agreement A 2025-2022 Easement in Relation to the 118 North Main Street. Mr. Johnson.
All right, so this is really just a cleanup effort. We're dealing with a party wall agreement from back in, I think, the 1880s, 1886 it looks like. If you look at the document, it's handwritten, cursive, in pen, it's not the easiest thing to go through. I don't have a copy of it in the agenda, but really what this agreement will do is supersede that old party wall agreement, modernize the language, make it so you can read it. And it just brings it in line with other encroachment easements that the city has in place nowadays. So I guess with that, the intention of the document is just to allow the encroachment to stay in its current location and then provide some maintenance standards. So I think with that, we can open it up to any questions if there are any.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Turks. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve Agreement A 2025-23 Purchase Agreement for 301 North Main Street Property. Mr. Johnson.
All right, city staff has been working with John Adamo in relation to this 301 North Main property. As you can see in front of you, this would result in the city acquiring the majority of that parcel. Staff has been working on preliminary concepts for a parking lot. One caveat here would be that the owner is retaining the southwest portion of the property to build a storage garage and then have a location to place some garbage cans and things like that for the future restaurant that will be across the street to the south. And I think that's probably a basic overview for you. The sale is just a dollar. There's no other monetary consideration or anything like that. I believe that the funds were budgeted to proceed with the construction of the parking lot in this year's budget. So I guess at this point, we can open it up for questions.
Where are the people who live in that Third and Main building? Where do they park their cars currently?
I guess I don't know what their occupancy is at this point. My guess would be there's some street parking. And then further to the southwest, behind Dr. Lucky's, there's also a large public parking lot available right now, so.
Are we doing this to clean up the area or what do we need parking for? I don't know who we answer that question for, but.
Yeah, I'm probably not the person to answer that question. I know that this project has been in discussion for about a year. I think it originally was initiated by the current owner who realized.
We kinda bailing him out a little bit? I mean, this is his parking lot.
That I can't say. I know that he had no intention to proceed with the parking lot on that. I know that, you know, there had been discussion on that at some point. You know, he had a lot of different concepts for that. Ultimately, he's not able to proceed with those projects. So he came forward with the idea to transfer it over to the city and the city could build a parking lot.
I have another question, Justin. Somebody reached out to me today and, so is he gonna keep that little spot there? Are we paving the whole parking lot then?
I'm sorry.
Are we paving the whole parking lot? The city?
I don't know if they have a final design on that yet, but I think it would be a majority of that space, yes.
Somebody asked if there were paving, if he was gonna pay for his portion of the paving or if the city's paying for everything or?
Well, he, the portion that he's retaining, he's gonna end up putting a garage there. So he'll be responsible for any of the improvements on the portion he's keeping.
He's responsible for that.
Correct.
That's what they're wondering.
Stephanie, can you show us where he's at on his TIF? I know you stated how much he's been paid, but I wanna see it. I looked it up and he's way behind on what his.
Projection?
Projections were.
Do you mean like how fast the increment is generating versus what they predicted?
Yes.
I, that might take me a minute, but I don't believe it's at the rate that they thought that they would be collecting.
Okay, so then I'd like to state, I think there's five of us sitting around this table who got snuckered. Because he stated in his developer's agreement that he's going to build this building in an amount of $800,000, anywhere between a 3,000 and 6,000 square foot building he says he's gonna build. And he didn't do it. So I'm kinda with what Dan's saying. I feel like we're bailing him out. I'm a, let him keep it or if someone else wants to take it on and develop it, let them develop it. Because I countered myself and I could be wrong, but if you go on, and I did this because of Mr. Genega's article or response to the Daily Republic. Just curious, how many parking lots if you go from the depot to TMA? And I came up with 14. So, and I can remember when the Casey's property transaction took place. Me and Susan had a conversation about it and you said you didn't want any more parking lots on Main Street. That's why you voted for that transaction. So I don't want any more parking lots on Main Street either. It doesn't help us if we wanna bring people to town. Everybody's talking about Main Street expanding and businesses. I don't think we need another parking lot.
I had a feeling someone would ask the question. So I'm ready. From First to Seventh Avenue, from about Main, a block and a half each way, there are roughly 522 parking spots. North of Seventh Avenue in the Disco and Pitts or I'm not sure which is TMA and Pitts, 385 parking spots. James Valley Community Service has 65. So if you go from, and then south of Main Street in front of the depot and down there, there's about 140 parking spots. So altogether, let's see, 972 from, everything from north of Main Street and then the other, excuse me, another 140 south of there. And that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 parking lots.
Yeah, you were wrong.
Which ones did you miss? So that is the parking, and I should do a caveat with it that might not be 100% exactly because the fifth lot we put in the EV stations there. So we might've lost one or two when I was counting off of a 2020 GS or 2023 GIS, so it's within reason though.
My opinion and I think we should, we should offer it up and do an RFP and see if anyone wants to build on it. It's a prime location, one of the busiest streets in Mitchell, and we want development downtown. You know, we want a big anchor store or, I mean, if we make it a parking lot, it'll be a parking lot forever. And we do have a lot, 16 parking lots. I think I'd rather have one extra restaurant or retail spot. You know, and I think if we put it for RFP and then we just say, you know what, we love one of these ideas, let's go for it. Or nobody applies and we make it a parking lot anyway, or we just reject them all and make a parking lot. I think if we do some RFPs or have the development corporation go out, that's their, you know, their thing is to bring development. I think if we said, hey, we'll just give you the land, get it back on the tax roll and create more downtown development. I think that'd be a big win for everyone.
I think we have our on-the-spot answer for you. So we have paid out or there's been increment generated in the total of $15,918.09. The project plan called for by 2024, they thought they would be at $94,000 in increment, which just means if they had applied for, um, I'm sorry. So if they had applied for this 561 because they're not generating as fast as they thought they would, it could be that they won't receive the full amount by the end of the TIF, if that makes sense.
Yep. So if we did, let's just say we did do an RFP and then someone built there, is that still in a TIF or a stick? So all of their increment would go to the current owner? Or does that get dissolved if it sells?
It's included in the boundaries, yes.
So, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas here. To me, I'd like to see some development rather than a, rather than a parking lot.
I'm a little surprised there's nobody here tonight to represent them. Blessed Steve.
And the other thing, the other thing I'm not aware of, because I wasn't involved in the discussions on the purchase, but was it specifically only offered if we were to do a parking lot?
Well, I'll say no, but I also don't know that the owner's willing to proceed with it if that's not gonna be the case. So, you know, you can approve it however you want tonight, but ultimately, they still need to sign the document. And if they're not gonna sign it unless we're proceeding with the way that it's been understood up to this point. And I'll say there haven't been alternatives considered because council budgeted this in last year's, in last year's budget for this year. So I don't know whether the owner would still proceed with it or not. I can tell you that if there was going to be an alternative use for the property with us taking it the way that this agreement is set up right now, we would still be obligated to give them an easement to access the garage. So we would have to accommodate that with whatever future development there, alternative development there would be of that site.
Could we table it for two weeks and try to find out what their intentions are? If we, you know, if we decide not to do it?
Yeah, I guess I would, if you want me to reach back out to them, I would prefer what direction the council wants to see on it. If they don't intend to put a parking lot there, I think that's something that they need to understand.
I have one question. So let's say the deal doesn't go through because they don't wanna see whatever. Are they like under some sort of, can it stay a gravel lot forever, I guess is my question? Or are they under any sort of obligation to pave it eventually? Mark? No? It could stay a gravel lot forever, okay.
Yeah, I don't believe that there would be.
I think it'd be good to have them come in and at least we can ask some questions to them to see. Because obviously with the number of apartments that they are remodeling and investing into improving, you do need parking spots for people to move in. So I think it'd be good to have a discussion with them and, and maybe it's not the whole parking lot either or the whole area. But it is prime spot. I will give you that. It's one of the busiest corners we have on Main Street.
You wanna come up from the audience while we, before we move on?
John Claggett for the United Methodist Church, and as you mentioned, it's a hotspot. We have tons of activity happening there. This kinda caught us by surprise, our trustees, so I got on the phone and chatted with our trustees. And we're, we're very tickled at what John's done and the conversations we've had. But our concern always is traffic. Where are we gonna go? And just for example, last Thursday, we served 675 meals along with the funeral. So there's a lot of things happening, which is great. That's just what we do. Susan, you mentioned about parking, I think it was. And most of those people have been into that parking area, so it did what it was supposed to do. And we're, we're just watching the process and again, it just kinda came new to us. And if something would change, keep us in mind because we used to own part of that. And so there might be some considerations if that's something that works for John and the rest of the crew, so.
Would you like to own it again?
Yes.
Okay.
We have lots of activity.
Okay, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to table it or?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, motion to table. Second by Mrs. Turks. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A 2025-24 facility use agreement between the City of Mitchell and Eastern South Dakota Chapter of the Red Cross. Ms. Owen.
Mayor and council, the City of Mitchell was requested to update our facility use agreements that we have with the Red Cross. It's my understanding the last time these had been approved was back in 2013 or 2014. They were assigned by Mayor Tracy. It just basically lines out or spells out the agreement for how they use our facilities. This would be for the Corn Palace, JVCC, and the Rec Center. The most free, or the most recent time that we had something like this happen was after the last flood. We did use the Rec Center for a short time as a shelter for anyone that was displaced by the flood. So they are requesting that we update this to their current formats. And if there's questions, I'd probably have to lean on the other staff that are here because I was not involved in those conversations initially.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Number 22, action to approve waiving $20,118 of interest owed on the interim financing resolution number 3063. So do you wanna start or you want me to start?
Sure, I can if you want.
Okay.
Mayor and council, included in the packet was a copy of the resolution from, I gotta look at the year again because now I'm gonna forget, back in 2013 when the General Fund provided financing to the Golf Fund to purchase some golf carts in the amount of $100,000. After they were purchased, there was one payment made for $25,000. We've had an existing balance since that time. I did wanna point out that there's been a lot of conversation about this loan. It's really important for us to point out that the Golf Fund has not had a substantial cash balance in the previous years. So that's why we really haven't been talking about this prior to, it was brought up during the budget discussions in '23 and '24. This line on the left shows you cash transfers from the General Fund into the Golf Fund and then what that existing cash balance is on the Golf Fund each year on the right. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. Just because of all the discussion, if council would move forward with waiving the interest owed, which Mayor Hanson actually wanted to do that initially and then the conversation was that it's a financial action, so we had to bring it back to the council. If you do wanna move forward with waiving the interest, then what we will do is we will add this transfer out of the Golf Fund to the General Fund in the second reading of the supplemental appropriation ordinance so we can get that repaid and off the books.
Yeah, so I'll take it from here. So at the last city council meeting, I, you know, I was kinda playfully making, not making fun of, but you know, saying that the golf carts hadn't paid their bills or they didn't, you know, make their payment, you know, and I, some people probably took that a little harsh and I understand it because it is a little bit of an accusation. And it wasn't really fair for, so I'd like to apologize to Kevin and everyone and all, and especially the staff. The staff, city staff, nobody did anything wrong at any point during this at all. Essentially, they just take action from the elected officials. So, you know, after discussing this, and I'm glad I brought it up because now we can finally have some closure to this saga of golf carts. And, you know, I was, I only speak with whatever information I have at that time, you know. I could say a little something and then someone tells me something and then I learn some more and we go forward. So, you know, it's, hopefully no one's too offended, but I just like to work towards solutions on everything. And, you know, I think we've come to one and, you know, I said we should, probably shouldn't charge them 2% interest if it's just been sitting out there and we could've taken the money if we wanted to for the last four years. I don't know that that's fair. So I can't make that decision. That's why I brought it here. And I think it's, you know, the golf board and everyone at the golf course. Everyone's all in good faith and everyone seems to be happy and good to go with all this stuff. And I think we can hopefully just put this behind us now.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R 2025-16, a resolution providing interim financing to the Golf Fund. Ms. Owen.
After we reviewed the previous resolution, just discussed, it became apparent that it's very helpful to have these on the record. So we're just asking for council to approve a similar resolution for the most recent financing that was approved at the last meeting, allowing them to purchase equipment. And again, for anyone that didn't watch the last meeting, we're giving it, they were gonna have to finance it at a rate of 7% and we're just charging what we would've lost in interest and allowing to save money on those interest payments for the golf course to purchase that equipment over the next five years. Correct, Kevin?
Correct.
Five years, yes. So again, it's just gonna be helpful to have this on the record, so we have something to refer back to in the future.
It is nice to have documentation.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. McConnell. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R 2025-17, a resolution giving the approval to the acquisition, construction, and financing of the sanitary sewer improvements projects, giving approval to the issuance of the borrower bond to finance a portion of the cost of such project and authorizing the sale of said bond. Ms. Owen.
I know this is gonna seem repetitive, but this resolution needs to go in with our application to peer to the state revolving loan fund for the financing that we've applied for for the lake project. Council's already authorized the resolution, or I mean, the public already authorized the loan by a vote, which moved it into the 10% debt capacity. But bond council still wants us to pass this resolution to go with the application for that financing. Well, let's do it then. I move to approve resolution R 2025-17.
Motion by Mrs. Turks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Action to approve resolution R 2025-18, a resolution amending the 2025 compensation plan to add a part-time position to the Park and Recreation Department Cemetery and Golf. Ms. Owen.
This would should be relatively easy. It is a budgeted position, but it is a new position. So when department head submitted the request, we just missed this one. One correction, this is only at the. Golf course. Yes, it shouldn't be cemetery golf, it's just golf course. Again, the position's budgeted, the finances are there to hire the position. They just need the authority to hire the position. Is this a seasonal position? Part-time. Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Turks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion?
What was the hourly rate?
$20 an hour. It's less than our full-time mechanics.
But it's a part-time job?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, just something like, it's been bugging me, I see the ad at the pool. And I don't know where they're at as far as filling the lifeguards and positions and things like that. But I've noticed that, and I've had people comment to me on they need to pay more to get better lifeguard and stuff. And I kind of agree with them because if you think about it, that could be your kid they're saving. So I think, I don't know where we're at, if that was part of your wage study when you did your wage study.
Part-time wages, we don't usually include in that big formal wage study that we do. Although last year, we did do a comparison with other cities to see what others were charging. Based on that, we made changes to the plan where they start farther in. This year, it was incorporated into the part-time plan that's already been.
Okay, so that being said, can you tell me what a lifeguard makes, like a first-year lifeguard?
Test. I believe we're at 1380 per hour.
And you have two different, you have two different kinds. You have the non-water.
WSI, which should be a water safety instructor. They teach swimming lessons, they'd be up from there, but the basic lifeguard will be at 1380.
So that's up from last year.
Yeah.
I think it was 1280 last year.
That's why I was saying, because I remember somebody told me it was 12-something, so it must be up from last year.
Are you fully staffed with lifeguard?
That's what I was going to ask.
We're looking for about 25 again for this summer.
But they weren't fully staffed last year, correct?
We were fully staffed last summer. There'll be two trainings coming up prior to summer.
Could be you.
So here we go, lifeguard, water, safety. I started a step three of grade four. Grade of wages. Step three, so 1470.
For the WSI.
Yep.
Getting better. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries first reading on ordinance O 2025-02 supplemental appropriation ordinance for the city of Mitchell SD for fiscal year 2025.
Mayor and council, I did do provide an overview in the packet. Actually, I'm going to bring this up as a PDF, it'll show better on the screen. It just overviewed the supplemental appropriations for this year. Of our 2025 supplemental budget requests, the total supplements are $51,664,091. That's a really big number, so I wanted to make sure I showed by category what those supplements are for. And as you can see, almost 94% of those supplements are for projects that we started in '24 but didn't get completed. That total is $48,184,841. It's also a very large number, but we also have some very large utility projects that we have started last year and are carrying those into this year. Then we had $1.1 million of projects where the, they were budgeted in '25, but after the budget was passed, now the cost estimates have increased. We had some repair items that have come up. A few items, four items that were cut from the '25 budget that were requested to put back in. And then new items that were requested by the city council. I mean, not requested by the city council, excuse me, that have been approved by council. And then this just shows it in another format for you, so you can see what that looks like comparatively. If you look by the projects that were not, that were budgeted but not completed in 2024, if you remember, that's almost 94% of the total supplements. You can see 33 million of those is in the sewer fund alone. And then we've got the Lake Mitchell project, which we had the jetty and the drawdown budgeted last year and they're not complete, so we're rolling those over. And then we had some in the water fund and then general fund. Campground fund was, well, there's more detail in here, but that was the FEMA storm shelter. I did have to update, we'll get to the cash balances. This just shows you by department what those requests were for the general fund. For the projects that were budgeted and not completed in the general fund, you can see a list here by department. Again, the bigger projects are, or the bigger dollar amounts are projects that we started this year that, excuse me, started in '24 that didn't get finished. So we've got livesay utilities, some of that streetscape and drainage work. Second, seventh, that should say second, fourth, and railroad, not seventh, excuse me. And then we've got the West End Bridge project, Raleigh, you can see this here, I won't have to read through them for you. And then our signal lights that were talked about earlier today. These are the projects for the cost increase in the general fund. We did see an increase in our liability insurance premiums and our audit went up as well. So we, and our managed print services, which is citywide. So I did include those just so that we don't have to use contingency funds next year to get that done. And then these are just some repair items that came up after the budget was approved. We did have the repeater that's like basically the communication link for the fire that went out that we were able to get by for a month or two, but now we do need to get that replaced, so we don't lose our emergency communication. And then there was two budget cuts. One was in the library, part-time wages, they had requested more. Well, they had unspent budget funds in 2024, so they're asking to add those part-time wages back in. And then they had budgeted for a digital sign and the proposal is that they would take half of the money from the library trust fund and the other half coming from their unspent budget in 2024. Dan, I hope you can hear me tonight. Is my voice, am I speaking clear enough? Okay. It's better than last time, I'm not whispering, but I apologize about this. So then we've got the general fund request that came after budget approval. We've got the design of the storm improvements that was just done at the last meeting. We have some additional tree removal that council approved previously up on North Main as part of that project. And then also discussed tonight, adding the first and main signal lights to the seventh and main signal light project. And then another addition is the property acquisition for economic development purposes. And then just to accommodate the other requests that we'll go through later, we're going to have to transfer another $100,000 out of the general fund to the airport fund. That was discussed at the last meeting that allows the airport to do another hangar that will be a revenue generator for that fund. And then the, we've talked a lot about the Corn Palace chairs, everybody knows about those.
I think it's important to point out on that hangar that that's part of a grant that we are paying a small portion.
Yeah, that's 10% of the total cost, is that right, Joe? Yeah, 10%. Yeah, that's a good point, Susan. So in the park fund, if you look at their breakout, that's projects budgeted but not completed, $60,000. Then they had 707 of project increases. So you can see the breakout here, they just had some fitness equipment that didn't quite get done. We've been carrying this balance forward on the ice arena repairs for five or six years now. I think that's the remaining balance. And then we have the cost increase for the pickleball courts and Cadwell Park. And some repair, I don't know why that's on there twice. Sorry, that shouldn't have been on there twice. Yeah. This would be a new request after the 2025 budget. If you remember, we eliminated an administrative staff position and hired another park specialist. So the tool cat will help with that snow removal on all the new bike paths that have been added. And then council requested that we add the tennis court design into this budget, so that's included in there as well. For lake, we still have three, almost 3.4 million on the drawdown project. Basically, just some design fees have been taken off of that. And then the remaining balance for the jetty marina, but we do still have grant revenue coming in to offset that. And then we have about $100,000 left on the NACA grant in the lake as well, for the watershed work, lake fund, I should say. This is the remaining budget balances for entertainment tax for the streetscape and the plaza expansion. E911, we just have, they had radio upgrades that they were waiting to do last year, but the state kind of put us on hold and now we're moving forward with it this year. So we've been waiting for them to work through some issues before we did the upgrade. Airport fund, we already talked about the hangar. And this is just carryover funds here too. Budgeted, not completed, cost increased here. And then this is the additional hangar that council's approved. Hopefully, as long as your bid's coming good, right? Okay, water fund projects, again, we have professional services, highway 37 utilities, some major projects here that are not done yet. And sewer, there's the big ticket items. We still have $23 million left on that south plant improvement. So when you see $33 million worth of projects left in the sewer fund, you can see these are ones that are pretty large projects that are multi-year. Sanitation, we still have some money left on the recycling building that was constructed last year. And then council's approval of the Corn Palace seating project. Golf fund, they had, I don't remember, oh yeah, they were budgeted last year, not completed. And then adding back in that golf course entrance sign. Campground fund, I feel like this has been in the budget for three years now, it feels like forever, but hopefully that will be completed this year, so. And I did show on here too, there is a revenue offset for the FEMA storm shelter. And then after the discussions last week, I just wanted to point out that because of the final or where we're at now with supplements, I wanted to give you an updated. Where last week I was estimating we'd be close to 35% reserves in general fund, we're actually up to 40% now because we, some of those items did not get, you know, that we were discussing at the last meeting, I didn't get direction to add those in. So the current estimated general fund reserve is 40%. And I can answer any other questions that you have specifically on the ordinance or on any of the detail items. And again, this is first reading, second reading would come back next week. And I would add in that 75,000 transfer out of golf fund as well for the second reading.
I'll prove first reading.
Motion, my Mr. McConnell, second by Mrs. Turks for first reading. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and first reading, reading of ordinance O 2025-03, repealing and replacing Title 12 flood control. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and council, since 2016, FEMA has been working on redoing the floodplain for the eastern 26, 27 counties of South Dakota. And with that, they have finally finished Davison Counties, which would be the flood insurance study, Davison County, South Dakota Incorporated areas. And as such, part of the project, the city of Mitchell must update its ordinance for flood control. The existing 2010 ordinance does not meet the minimum requirements for FEMA. They sent us a template and we asked them to review our existing one. And they came back and said we had about 14 different issues that would fail our existing ordinance. So we just used their template and filled in city of Mitchell, wherever we needed to. Because otherwise, they're just going to reject our ordinance altogether.
I'll add mark there though, that there was at least one provision that we took from our existing ordinance and incorporated it into the new one.
We could go more strict with things than going less strict. And so we always had the one-foot freeboard in floodplain that you could build up to one foot, had to be at least a one-foot freeboard to get out of the floodplain for that portion of it. So we put that in there as well. Just like in one of the sections, it talks about penalties, we put our general penalty in for what it would be. Theirs was just please fill in what yours would be type of thing. I can go through it if you'd like me to. You know, obviously, the big portions of it would be the 1213, it's a statement of purpose. That's just saying, you know, it's to protect human life and health and property, things like that. I'm not going to go through all of them because it's pretty basic stuff for that portion of it. The big part again is always 100-year flood does not mean that it's going to happen every 100 years. It's a 1% chance of happening. The 500-year flood is a 2%, 0.2% annual chance of flood, that's a big thing to remember. Just continuing through with all their definitions, they have a lot more definitions than what we did in our existing ordinance. Again, we thought we'd be able to just amend ours by just changing and saying, the flood insurance study for Davison County, South Dakota and Incorporated areas dated May 6, 2025. We thought we could do one sentence and they said no. So these maps would go into effect May 6, 2025. The ordinance does specify those maps with it. There's the first reading, second reading, 20-day appeal process for that. So this would be the first one to make sure that we have our ordinance in place by the time the maps would be adopted per their date and timeline. It just goes through their technical data, permit procedures that we will have to follow, variance and appeal procedures. More appeals, floodways. There's really nothing else that I have to highlight to say we should really discuss this portion of it. Justin, do you have anything to add with it at all?
I don't think so. You know, I know that there's going to be people that have issues with the maps themselves, but really that's nothing to do with this ordinance. That's a fight that they've got to take up with the federal government.
Yeah, that was my question, can you tell us how it'll affect an individual homeowner?
Yeah, so obviously new maps, because there's new data available, there's new ways to map things. Weather patterns have changed, so that means data has to change with it. So the floodplain isn't going to be exactly like it was before. So people could come into the floodplain, people could come out of the floodplain from previous. Anybody with a federally backed loan has to have flood insurance per FEMA. If you get your flood insurance from FEMA, the National Flood Insurance Program, before the May 6, it'll be a cheaper rate than going after May 6 of 2025. So that's a big thing to know. There were some LOMAs or LOMARS, letter of map amendment, letter of map revision, things like that, that were previously approved by FEMA that they are now going back and saying that does not count anymore because of the new data that we have. So some people that were originally taken out, paid money to get taken out, FEMA has put back into the floodplain. FEMA has put them back into the floodplain, not the city of Mitchell.
I'd just like to stress that one more time.
Yeah, there's quite a few people in my neighborhood that are now, their houses will be in a floodplain, which is going to drastically affect home values. And I just tell them there's nothing we can do, it's all FEMA. But there's going to be, there's going to be unbuiltable lots out there now and there's people that are going to have to buy flood insurance. They're going to take a big hit on their property value, I think.
What we were waiting for, for a long time was obviously the maps, because there were so many mapping, mapping, mapping preliminaries. Then we finally got, we believe this is going to be your preliminary. And then it was, well, we won't do anything with any of the CLOMARS, which would be your changes of map amendments or any of those things, until after we give you your preliminary and we're going to wait about three, four months to give you that, but yet you have to adopt it two months after the fact. So we got our final summary of map actions that showed all of the LOMARS and LOMAS that were done previously, whether they were actually going to stay in or get pulled out. We got that just recently and that's where the people out on the island, originally that was all pulled out and now the south portion is put back into it. That was one that during the final summary of map actions, FEMA said, no, we're not going to keep that out of the floodplain. And they have their lists as why they're superseded. And that would be Davison County, final summary of map actions, the fourth one down, that one. So this shows all of the LOMARS or LOMAS, LOMAFs, LOMRFs that were done previously, what was approved, what wasn't, what got taken back out, what got put back in. And that's the last portion of the map that we were waiting for and now we're at the spot right here.
Is there any kind of an appeals process or is, and who, I have a lot of questions about this. But like, is it just one person from FEMA that said, that issued this edict? Or is there any kind of a way that you can appeal it or ask for a second opinion or have another person come and do an evaluation?
I'll let Joe answer that portion.
So the way, the way the floodplanes were determined was by software modeling by an engineer. And this is what they came up with, of what it is. There is a process to have the map changed, but it's on the burden of either the municipality or the homeowner to say, hey, your maps are wrong. We have reached out to a consultant to ask a few questions to potentially start that process. Other communities have done it in the past, or previous mapping that they thought was wrong. And basically, you're looking at more detailed information, you're reviewing how they modeled it to, to say, hey, we think this is wrong. And through that process, you have And through that process, you have to submit it to FEMA, you have to pay to have it reviewed, and then they review it and they tell you whether they think your information is correct or not.
So my next question is, let's say that I'm a homeowner who's affected by this, is there something that I can do to my home that would be, provide documentation or an argument that would, that I could give to my insurance company and say, while I may be in a floodplain, this is what I've done? Is there anything that can be done proactively?
I do know FEMA has their guidelines of things that help with their insurance, but really, the biggest thing you can do is if you think your house is above the elevation, I forget exactly what it's called, but you can have a surveyor come out, give that elevation and send it into FEMA to get you out of the floodplain. But if you're in the floodplain, it's tough.
Joe, to follow up on the appeals question, I believe that they, I've only sat on one of these calls, but I believe they said that you have to go through the adoption process before you can start into that appeals process, correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's one of my, someone in that area just messaged me and asked if the city would be at fault, no, I'm just asking a question, if the city would be at fault because the bridges, they're saying, what is slowing down the water so much, was, so was the bridge, the west end bridge built too low? I just got this question. No, I know you.
It's hard, I'm not an attorney. But with FEMA saying that, you know, previously, the island was out, and now it's in, I have a hard time believing that the city would be on the hook for FEMA changing their maps from one to another.
That makes sense. But we have to, we have to adopt this before, you can't, yeah, I guess you can't appeal something that hasn't happened, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will say that conversation I had with SD OEM, they are not having very much conversation with anybody in region eight FEMA due to circumstances in the nation. So it will take longer to get answers from them.
Yeah, is that the new map?
I would not use that one.
Yeah, that one, that one puts me in the flood zone.
Go back to that, that's actually a good thing to...
Mark, did you say, when was the last time we had one?
Twenty-ten was when the last time that this was done, and it wasn't done throughout the whole county, it was just a portion of it. But, okay, look, can you zoom in at the island? Yep, right there. So these were preliminary maps that we got, saying that this is where it could go to floodplain. That island court is really high right there. Okay, go back to our agenda center. Go to number sixty-four.
Man, you got this down, Mark. He's done his homework a lot on this.
I was trying to find one.
Good job.
Zoom in now. Yep, over a little bit, zoom in a little bit more so you can really see Island Court. So originally, on that other map that is on the county GIS, which there's no, they're not wrong to have that up there because it was preliminary. On that one, what we were waiting was, they were saying everything on Island Court on the east side was gonna be in floodplain. When they finally came back out and looked at the LOMARS, the LOMAS, the everything else, they just said that it's on the west side. So they did take some more out, but not everything, like the previous LOMAR was. And it just took a long time to do it.
On the what, sorry? On the west side of Island Court, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
So there are some homes on Island Court that are in the floodplain.
Yes.
Can you go back to the Davison County one?
Yours?
Not, not quite mine.
So I think it'd be like, one, two, three, four, four, five, and then someone else just built here, but I think they might be up enough.
Yep. He built his actually, I believe it was thirteen inches above floodplain in that area because he didn't want to walk out and was figuring that he might come back in. So he could probably do a LOMA F, which would be a LOMA with fill, but he'd still have to go through the process with a surveyor or engineer to provide the document saying, I am actually out of the floodplain.
Yeah, so this'll put seven, I think, seven houses into the floodplain? Seven houses?
In this area.
In this area only.
Dry Run Creek is the other area where some came into the floodplain, some actually came out of the floodplain in there as well. If you look at the maps, I don't know this number, though. Downtown Mitchell, in Old Park Mitchell, like in this area, or down towards the depot, it's five-hundred-year floodplain. And you try, when you try and trace it back, you, how is this five-hundred-year floodplain in this area? But it is. Now, we don't need any, you don't have to get insurance for any of that stuff, just the one hundred. So if you live in a floodplain, talk to your bank or your lender, and see if they're gonna require your flood insurance, which they probably are gonna require your flood insurance.
And then do the insurance companies just like, increase the premiums substantially?
That would be, in this area, the, yep, to the left side. That's right by the depot, right there.
What's right there?
Up to the right a little bit.
So the striped areas, the floodplains that are probably...
That's the railroad tracks where her mouse is at, just north of that is all the five-hundred-year, that, all that tan is five-hundred-year, but, yeah.
The only thing they, they do not take into account in these areas is the storm sewer that we have. But obviously, we do have localized flooding in large rain events.
We probably need a motion, yes? I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. McArdle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion to enter into executive session according to SDCL 12523 legal.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries, there will be no action after executive session.
I didn't count the SBN pod either, because we just did it in a really public parking lot, or your parking, we're all staff parks.
Size off three, really, I did count it.
We're all staff parks during the day.